I'm going to go ahead and call our meeting to order and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There we go. Yep. And the next item on our agenda then is our mission statement, and that is that the Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community. So the first item on our agenda this evening is information from individuals and delegations, and I would ask our Board Secretary Pam Arndorfer if there are any public comments this evening.
I did have a parent that has a letter that she would like the Board members to receive, which I will send to you later. She did not want that read publicly tonight because there's some personal information in it, but she did want everybody to receive that, and I will send that out when I go sit down.
Wonderful.
Other than that, there was nothing else.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, our first item then is Item A, which is a board celebration for our robotics team. And I'm going to bring up Tara Thomas and Dick Urban from the FIRST Robotics Competition. And I'm so excited to have student faces in our audience tonight. This is like, yay!
It is so exciting to introduce a familiar face to all of us, Coach Dick Urban, the incredible mentor and longtime volunteer to support our robotics students at both East and West High Schools. I am going to stream this live, so I'll step aside and start the stream so you can take the mic.
Thank you very much. I'm only going to do a little bit of talking tonight because obviously we want the students to talk. That's a big part of our program. So Tara wanted to mention, wanted me to mention how long I've been involved with robotics. So I got involved in 2008 when my daughters joined the Cedar Falls teams. In 2011, though, I was asked to come form a team that Ms. Johnson over there knows very well about because we started with Mickey at 5445 at UNIQ in 2011. 2013, we started some FTC teams at the high school, at which time, you know, that program has since blossomed, and you're also going to see some of the results of that tonight. And that's enough about me, so we're going to jump right in with some of the students presenting.
Excellent. Come on up, guys, gals.
Hi, my name's Austin. I am the team captain for this last year's game. And so first off, I just wanted to say hi. We're Unity for, or Waterloo Robotics, and we have been competing with our FIRST Tech Challenge Team, 7247, the H-Toll U-Box, and our FIRST Robotics Competition Team, 5837, Unity for Tech. Most importantly, we are one very big happy family composed of East and West High School students. I wanted to first talk about our accomplishments last year with our Unity for Tech team.
So I'm going to just describe the awards. So last year at this time, we were awarded the FRC Iowa Regional Chairman's Award, which is the top award that's given at a regional. So as you can read there, it's the most prestigious award, and it's really given to the team that best represents and emulates the full embodiment of the FIRST principles. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Okay, so let me back up. So we won this award last year about this time. It was given at the Iowa Regional, held in Cedar Falls. It was a virtual award last year based on the submission by the students. But the central thing is it is awarded to the team that most embodies the principles of FIRST. So we're going to have another student talk a little bit about this.
Hi, thank you. I'm Joshua. I'm the co-captain of the team. So like he said, it's one of the most prestigious awards in FIRST. It's the highest award given at any regional and the world championship in the FIRST Robotics Competition. We wrote the essay based on all of our accomplishments as a team over the last few years, and we submitted this in February of 2020. And based off of our award, we actually did qualify for the world championship. However, it was canceled due to COVID.
Okay, so I'm going to step back up in the Think Award, so that's, this year's award was the Think Award. And you can again hear, read up there what the details are about it. But it is the top engineering award that's given at the Iowa State Championship. And we worked really hard, or the students worked really hard, and we were quite proud of this award.
So the Think Award is based off of your engineering portfolio and evolutions through design processes that we've done this year. And one thing that was very accomplished this year was that we were able to fully build our robot and to show it through our portfolio. And we tried a lot of new things this year. And this award was competed through 27 other teams, 28 including us, at the Iowa championship level. This award would have moved us on to the FIRST World Championship, but unfortunately it was canceled again due to COVID.
Hi, I'm Ethan. Some of the team impact this year, or well, in general, we've improved students' self-confidence and prepared them to speak in public. We've provided a safe and inclusive environment, and we've prepared people for college. And for outreach for our team, we have presented to at least 1,000 students and community members since the creation of our teams. And over 90% of the graduates that went through our teams have sought out higher education.
Hello, I am, my name is Noah, and for, in our future, we want to recruit. We want to continue to work on recruiting people of other minorities because our team is mostly white males. We have plans for reaching out to a country in Africa, Chad, that is, hopefully we will start up in 2023 and have them prepared for that game season. We want to continue to grow and try new things. We have workshops at, we will have workshops at our robotics trailer for people who want to learn skills, like we have woodworking, coding, and building the robot. And then we also would like to strive to reach the goal of winning the FTC Inspire Award in the 2021-2022 season.
So as we begin to close out our prepared presentation, I'd like to thank all of you guys for your continued support throughout the last few years that we've been a team. And we strive to make next year and the ones following even better than this year. So moving on, I'd like to invite you guys to come and celebrate with us even more at the My Waterloo Days Parade on the 11th of June 2021. And if any of you guys have any further questions or anything like that, you know, we're open to them, and you guys can even contact us through a variety of emails. Thank you.
So I don't know if anybody has any questions, but we're willing to entertain them. I don't know how much time you have. We do have, this year's robot setup outside. If you want to see it shoot some rings, or I don't know what your schedule really allows. You're prepared for a couple minutes if you wanted to go see a robot.
Yeah, sure. Yes, we could, we could do that.
One second, though. I'd like each of you young men that talked, if you would give us what year you are and what your future plans are and what is the best thing you've learned from the robotic team.
So like I said, my name's Austin. I'm the captain for this year's game, and this is my seventh year in robotics, and I'm a senior, and this was my last year, of course. And one thing I've learned the most was how to continually improve myself and continue going forward because I plan on going to Hawkeye for my first couple of years and transfer to another school, but I want to go into engineering, so hopefully somewhere along those lines.
Thank you.
So once again, I'm Josh. I'm a junior this year at West, and I'm planning to go to U&amp;I and then over to Iowa State to pursue engineering degrees. And the biggest thing I've learned as part of FIRST in general is to just be a part of something bigger than myself.
My name is Noah. I'm a sophomore at West. My future plans are going off to U&amp;I, hopefully. And one thing that I've learned from robotics is I have learned how to fine-tune my abilities in woodworking and coding.
I'm Ethan. I am a freshman at West. This is my sixth year in robotics. And one thing that I've learned from robotics is probably just to try new things and not be afraid of failing. And I'm also going to seek higher education at Iowa State and get an engineering degree.
And we should mention that there are two East graduates serving as mentors for the team, one attending U&amp;I and one attending Hawkeye. Do you ladies want to come up and introduce yourselves? I know the board appreciates you coming.
Yes, come on.
And how about the other two T-shirt wearers on the right?
You guys come up and introduce yourselves and tell us just a little bit about yourselves. We'd love to hear it. You can't come to a meeting and not practice your public speaking skills. Come on.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Audrey DeLavou. I'm an East High graduate of 2020. And right now, I'm a freshman at U&amp;I, and I'm an athletic training and rehabilitations student.
I'm Tessa Borwig. I am also a 2020 graduate from East High. Right now, I'm at Hawkeye and plans to transfer to U&amp;I for environmental sciences.
Hello, my name is Bailey. I am a sophomore at East High. I am looking into going, taking gen ed classes at possibly COE and then moving on to Iowa State. One thing robotics has taught me is to continue working on problem-solving skills and creative thinking, think outside the box, but also to think simple.
Hello, my name is Brendan. I am a freshman at East High, and I've had a rough couple of years of my life, and robotics has kind of made me feel better about myself, including my social skills coming out of my shell, stuff like that.
Thank you all. We didn't mean to put you on the spot, but we did, so.
I have a general question. In progressing from the initial planning, I'm assuming the objectives are kind of defined at the outset from FIRST, but progressing from planning through actually manufacturing and execution, was there a particular project management process that was followed? Or how did you determine who was, who's going to do what when in order to go from step to step?
So one thing that we do is we make sure everybody's included. And if somebody wants to participate in a certain aspect of what we do, they are more than welcome to step up, and we also reach out and try to get them to come, like, try to help us. And like with building, we have people that want, that come build, they can come help build. Coding, same thing, and then outreach is, we have to set up outreach events, and we try to get as many people included as we can.
So you pull other people in occasionally to help out in that process?
Yes, so this year was one of our biggest years, even though we were struggling through COVID. We have been able to reach out to seven new members, and now they are on our team, and we continue to grow.
They're all team members that help out them, but we've expanded the team roster this year.
So how many people total do you have on there?
So what we have registered, so we've got the FRC team, which has no team limit size. So we've got 22 students on that. The FTC, FRC team has no limit. We have 22 registered students this year. FTC, you can only have a maximum of 15. So that was kind of like a little rotating group. Some kids came in, some kids kind of did less. But in the program, we have about 22, and we have a couple of people that are showing up that are not quite registered. We'll get them registered before the year's out.
Thank you.
So what are the limitations that you found that could be overcome somehow by either, I don't know, more time, more resources, more whatever that take you all to the next step? Involve more people, especially expanding to involve more, maybe more teams, more people?
So the first thing that came to my mind was more manufacturing places because we're kind of limited right now. We have been talking about trying to get into buying a CNC router. That would help us out a lot because then we were able to manufacture more things. And then also just getting more access to the Career Center, getting into their machine shop out there. That would help a lot. I know Josh wants to talk about one other thing that we have been doing recently.
So this might not exactly fit your topic, but one thing that our team is really proud of this year, considering everything that's really happened overall, is we're actually starting a team over in the country of Chad, which is in Africa. And we're really getting a lot of people in over there, and we've gotten six mentors over there already. And we're very proud to be working with them. We sent a few different materials over them, including guides on how to build and program robots and just stuff like that. And we are really proud to be able to work with them and get them ready to compete within the next couple of years.
So how do you communicate with them also?
So we've done a few Zoom meetings with them, a few of the potential mentors over there, just to kind of touch base, get plans on what we're doing moving forward. Other than that, we make videos for them, and we've done language lists, manuals, kind of like Lego sets, you know, that have as few words as possible because they do speak a different language than us. So we had to overcome a language barrier and especially a time barrier. So, you know, having prepared videos and, you know, those manuals, we sent them over, and, you know, they've been a very big help, so.
Thank you. Very impressive.
I have a comment and a question. You want to go?
Yep.
So first, as a proud robotics dad.
He needs to show up more often, though.
I truly appreciate you, Mr. Urban, and the rest of your group. One of the gentlemen talked about that being a space where he can come out of his shell. All you guys spoke very articulate, and if that helps you, you know, just being in that space, that's a huge thing, not only for now, but in the future as well. Everybody had aspirations of going to college and a lot of engineers in the group, so just wanted to make that comment. And also, I know that robotics takes a lot of time, a lot of time, because I wonder where my son is all the time, and then I'll ride by the trailer, and the car's there. So I know he's with you guys. But how much time do you spend generally working on in robotics and with that?
So I'll answer that question. So basically, the FTC season starts the first weekend in September. So we had some breaks. We couldn't start meeting until October, then we had a break. But generally, after we were allowed to start meeting again after the November surge, we've been meeting six days a week on average up until the competition was over. So I know personally, I put in, from in the calendar year, I track my hours because I report them to John Deere. So I've got about 1,100 hours of volunteer time. Some of that is not when I'm at the trailer, you know, I'm doing stuff outside. These kids are, most of these kids are there when I'm there, right? Obviously, they're there, they're not there when I'm not there. But we've had some students that probably have easily put in 500 or 600 hours in the past year. So it's like another halftime job for me, but, you know, I wouldn't do it if I didn't love it, right?
Well, are you guys okay? Can we, can we just take a five-minute recess and walk out in the hallway here? Would that be a good board members? Okay, let's go. You guys go set it up for us. So I'm going to, we are kind of coming out of recess now. It's 5:34. So I can, oh, there's, I was going to say, so I can let Pam know that, so. Awesome. The next item on our agenda then is.
I have one, I have one more comment, if it's okay. As I alluded to, I think in the email response, the skill set is in such high demand that that's being developed here, and I don't know that anybody on the team even recognizes how important that is and how pivotal that may be in their, in their own individual future. But it's not just the technical skills, but the communication skills, the interpersonal relationships, all that. So I guess I would submit that this team be invited to submit a wish list of everything that they can visualize to help improve, expand, because this is exactly where the learning ought to, ought to happen. It's right, it's right on target. So not that everything on the wish list is going to be, is going to be granted, but now is the time to submit that and be bold.
Message received. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes. Awesome. All right. Lyle, sorry, I didn't mean to, didn't mean to go ahead there, so.
Don't you think? I mean, really, this is, this is right on.
Bring it on. All right, so the next item on our agenda then is Exhibit B. And this is, there's no board action here, but I'm going to ask Tara to come forward, and this is our School Board Recognition Month, and you have to make sure that you get a picture of these cookies. And Stacy, we're going to make sure you get your cool cookie because it's awesome.
Yes, the theme for 2021 in regard to School Board Recognition Month is so appropriate, "Leading Through Uncharted Waters." And I know that Dr. Lindeman has been very honest and open about this, as I'm sure many of you would, that this is perhaps the most trying year for anyone serving students and families in education in terms of all of the often last-minute or short-term, quick decisions that had to be made as we continued to pivot during the year of the COVID-19 pandemic. So I am honored to be asked to assist Pam Arndorfer in recognizing our Board of Directors tonight as we honor them during this School Board Recognition Month. And there are handmade cookies that are, we will take a photo of and share on social media displaying the month this yearly phrase, or the phrase of the year, which, as I said, is "Leading Through Uncharted Waters." So when I say your name, if you could please stand, and we will capture it on the livestream. And then, did you already present the cookies, Pam? Okay, they have their cookies. Okay. We will start with Shanley McNally. Shanley has been a board member for 13 years, so she started right out of high school. She is currently, she is currently in her eighth year as our School Board President. So thank you so much, Shanley, for your service. Sue Flynn. She has been a board member for 12 years, is currently in her sixth year as Vice President of the Board. Thank you so much, Sue, for your service. India Johnson. Hard to believe she has already been a board member now for four years, so congratulations on your service. Aster Williams. Aster has been a board member for four years as well. Thank you so much for your service. Jessie Knight. Jessie has been serving on the Board of Directors for six years. Congratulations on six years of service. And phoning in tonight is Stacy Mills. She has been a board member for two years. And last but not least, our longest-serving and perhaps most knowledgeable board member in terms of the history of the district, Lyle Schmidt. Serving for 28 years, two of which Lyle served as Vice President of the Board. Thank you so much for your service, and I would like to get all of you to stand together for a photo, if possible, so we could share this on social media.
Yes, yes.
So while you guys are getting together and posing up there, I just want to let you know, I heard somebody ask who made the cookies. One of our teachers made the cookies, Tanya Mastin. She's a teacher at Irving. And then also just to share that, you know, usually we do a luncheon for the board, and we have decided to do that in September.
Please thank whoever made these cookies because they are beautiful. And I might be digging into mine here in just a minute, so. Thank you, Tara. I know that, I'm not, I am going to speak for all of us when I say that we all appreciate being recognized, but that's not why we do what we do, so that we get recognized for sure, so. Well, maybe for some of you, but I think I'm kidding. All righty, so we can move on then to Item D, which is on page six, and this is our Cooperative Sponsorship Agreement, and these are with. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The Board Celebration for the ISPRA Publication Awards. Pardon me, I am not meaning to skip that, that's for sure. So Tara, I don't even know why I let you sit down. Congratulations to you and your team, and will you tell us a little more? Do you want me to, I can certainly read through these, or I'll let you?
No, no, no need, no need. I'll keep it concise. So we are fortunate that there are a couple of ways that the school and community relations departments work can be recognized, both at the state and national level. ISPR is an acronym for Iowa School Public Relations Association. Similarly, on the national level, it's INSPR. And we were fortunate with two years' worth of material due to a lapse in the awards last year because of COVID that we were able to enter a lot of content that we were proud of, much of it that was born out of the unusual pivot that we all went through because of COVID. So it's so neat to see students and staff being recognized for such creativity and exceptional work. Two highlights I'll mention, you can watch any and all of these videos on our YouTube channel, the Lincoln Students who went out and wanted to do Free Waves to Passersby, and both photos and still, or moving pictures, video from that event won awards. And then I have to acknowledge our top award went to the Waterloo Career Center ribbon cutting and all of the elements of that campaign, and so, you know, a special thanks to Dr. Lindeman for that because she really had the vision for that. And then it's fun that, that we can execute her plan, and it results in some statewide, and hopefully, because we entered it nationally, some national recognition for all that our district is doing that is considered innovative among our peer districts. So this was perfect timing for me because it turns out this is my last in-person school board meeting, and I just wanted to say, one of my favorite Bible verses is, "To whom much is given, much is expected." And I cannot thank everybody who's been a part of the district enough for all that Waterloo Schools has given to me personally and to my family these eight years. And I hope that, you know, I've been able to serve everyone well and give back for all that I've been blessed with. And I'm not going anywhere. My family will continue to live in Waterloo, and my husband is a teacher, and my children attend this district. And so I'm not moving to California, and I'm not moving back to Cedar Falls, as, as has been asked of us many times. You know, I believed in everything that I said professionally on a personal level, and I just can't stress enough how wonderful this district is. And I, I feel fortunate that my children will continue to benefit from it. So I wanted to share that when I had an opportunity for the last time in person.
Well, and Tara, I want to thank you and your family. I mean, your daughter has a heart of giving back and, and working in the community, just like her mama. And, and your husband, a teacher, he was one of my son's very favorite teachers at West High School. So it, you know, and you have, your Bible verses applicable to back at you too, that you have given so much to this district and to all of us, and we will miss you, and we appreciate it, but totally understand your decision and. but totally understand your decision, and it's right.
Thank you so much.
Echo Sue's thoughts, and you're right. Mr. Gatman, he connected with three of my children wonderfully. And I've had him, and couldn't say enough for all you guys have done and ways you guys are just influencing the community and children going forward, too.
Thank you so much.
And Tara, I've always been impressed. You brought a level of professionalism and information to this position. I think you've really taken this role to another level. You're leaving some really mighty big shoes to fill. And I just want to thank you for all of, you know, the advice and the things that you've helped me navigate, too, have been invaluable.
You've been the right person at the right time, and so we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations to your department for all these awesome awards. Woohoo! That's great. Okay, I did not mean to skip over that, goodness gracious. So now, now we'll go to the Cooperative Sponsorship Agreement. And there's actually no action on this this evening. This is just, we do not need to take board action, I guess is what I should say. This is just merely notifying our public, as well as all of us, the different cooperative sponsorship agreements that we have with different districts. And so you can see the requesting school, the activity, and then the host school. And these are all just renewals of current sharing that occurs with these programs and our programs and which sports. And I just want to say a personal thing. My own children have benefited greatly from, in fact, every program that my kids have done has been combined, and they have made some awesome and amazing friendships. And I think this is just a really cool thing that, you know, my daughter plays soccer right now with people from five different schools. And I think that that's really a blessing. So I'm very happy that we have these, and I'm very happy that the state allows us to do this and allows us to receive from districts who may not already have a program in place. I think it's really valuable for our athletes. So. All righty. So then we can move on to the consent agenda this evening. And it's a pretty lengthy consent agenda. It has 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 items on it this evening. Item E, which are the minutes of the April 26, 2021 regular board meeting. Item F, which are personnel appointments and adjustments. Item G, which are bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings. Item H, which is the lease of the former AEA 267 building. Item I, which is the IJAG Memorandum of Understanding. Item J, which is the postponement of the action of the 2021-2022 school nursing agreement from our previous meeting. Item K, which is setting the date of the public hearing for the proposed issuance of school infrastructure, sales, service, and use tax revenue refunding bonds. And Item L, which are board meeting dates. So could I have a motion to place those items on the table?
So moved.
Thank you, Sue.
Second.
And a second. Aster, Jessie, Arm Russell. Okay. And are there any items that board members wish to have removed?
Item F, Foxtrot, and I, India.
F and I. Okay. Then all those in favor of approving Items E, G, H, J, K, and L, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to Item F, which is on Page 24.
I move the Board of Education, approve the personnel items as listed.
Thank you, Lyle, and a second.
Second.
Thanks, India, and discussion.
Yeah, I see there's 21 resignations. And in this other sheet, there's 52 total this year. That seems like a lot, so maybe it's not. But what do we know about the reasons for these resignations? And what do we assume?
Yeah, it may seem like a large number. But again, as I tried to preface when we were in the height of COVID over last summer, that many people were sticking and staying due to transitional elements. And so because of that, you know, it kind of ebbed a little bit as far as we had a slow transition into this. But I would say it's on par for what we normally have as far as people leaving for the year. And the problem with these resignations is it is kind of tough because some of these resignations could be for plans. Some of these resignations, I know a lot of people have relocated. I know that one building in particular has been, almost all of them relocated. One actually had an issue with childcare. And so I couldn't say that any of those were related to, they were running or leaving from something in that sense. But I can, I can work on that, Lyle, to provide some extra survey data. I have my team working on that, as well as just do some preliminary exit surveys with individuals, some dipsticking in some buildings. Because the one building I'm talking about or thinking about in particular, I know why individuals are leaving. And it really is truly because of relocating. Spouses moving elsewhere, partners moving elsewhere. And so we're seeing a lot of that. Some of it also other job opportunities as well. For the most part, and I was going to share this during my update, the majority of our staff are sticking and staying. So we, again, as you probably know, not thinking about last year, but the year before, it does kind of come as a swift wave just right around this timeframe. And then you'll see whatever wave back coming in June and July as we have a number of hires that will then be on the board agenda. Some of those you should be seeing as early as next meeting.
I'm just going to ask, can you just kind of give us a number, like in 2019, what the number looked like for retirements versus now? I'm not going to say 2020, but 2019, just comparable as far as?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can get you that information as far as like, what is 2019? And we had around, you know, I think, Lyle, you always ask this question. We have about 80 to 100 people leaving the district. So we're right in line. Now, again, if another 70 show up at the next board meeting, my ears would start to perk a little bit. But again, remember, the problem with this is too, is that you're right in the middle of the contract process. And so many people are making their decisions. But right now, and wanting to make choices so we can hire out those positions. Again, last year, because we started with the process so much earlier because negotiations wasn't an issue, we were able to know that information ahead of time. And that also played into it, as COVID did as well.
Indeed. Okay. Thank you.
Kingsley, does every employee that leaves the district, or that, you know, that resigns, do they all receive an exit interview? Did I hear you say that?
They can. So there's, if they don't use an automated process, so there's two ways you can resign. Technically, we just need a document. So they all have the access to a link that they can then say they're resigning, and then they get an automated email that goes through a number of questions saying, hey, this is our exit survey, please fill out this information. And actually, we sent that out to the UEN group because I think a lot of UENS were interested in the questions that we asked, and also that it's an automated process. The other part of that is, in the summer primarily, that's why I was saying, probably do a preliminary one now. We then follow up with those individuals that may not have necessarily, or didn't leave us an automated resignation, instead decided to either hand in a paper or shoot us an email. And because Lorene is basically bogged down with all these things, she can't then send the exit survey. Like, it's just, it's a lot of moving parts. And so we just follow up with those individuals later on and say, hey, would you like to have an exit interview? We don't turn off individuals' emails because we still may have insurance things that we want to talk to them about until they technically leave the district or their contract ends in August 31st. So we still reach out to them and say, give them information in relation to that as well. But we'll do both, and I can provide a board update with that in regards to that process on Friday.
But there's really no substitute for an in-person, interactive question-and-answer interview.
Yeah, that's the next part. So they get an exit interview, they go through it, and then at the last question is, would you like a follow-up from our HR department? That's when I then schedule those meetings to follow up with them. I have two of them followed, I have two of them scheduled for this week on Wednesday of people exiting our district. One actually is somebody just moving from a position. And then we follow up with all the individuals that didn't do the link themselves, that gave the automated response, to give them an opportunity to ask if they'd like to meet with us as well.
Yeah. I just hope we're, I guess I would submit that we ought to be really, really proactive to invite them.
We are. I mean, the last time, when we did this process prior to me getting here, we used to send a letter out. And then we would ask the same questions as far as, hey, here are the questions. Not the same questions, but here are some questions. If you'd like to reach out to HR, you can. We had, actually, it was precious at the time, call them and walk them and talk to them about each of the different things. We have a ton of survey data that we get now. I'm not saying that part is not a part of the process. It just comes a little bit later.
I mean, I think we're moving up a little bit, we're being more competitive pay-wise. So, you know, one of my questions is how much is pay a factor? I'm sensing it's probably not really a huge factor. But nonetheless, the more we invest, the more sensitive we ought to be about someone leaving. At the, whatever we are, 7% or 8% rate, that means our average longevity is, what, 12, 13 years? That seems a little bit low, maybe it's not compared to other districts or other companies or historically.
Say that part again.
It seems like the average longevity of people employed in the district, it seems just kind of low, but I don't have much to compare it to. So that's kind of what I'm searching for, is what comparisons do we have? And what assumptions are we making? And what do we need to do to help improve that longevity?
You sent an email in regards to that, and, you know, I can, I only was able to look. I actually sent it to you during the board meeting, apologies. But right now, we have, for this resignation, so I was only able to get it for the people that are on this list, it went from .7, so somebody who had just started with us in January or started with us in December, through 19 years of service to the district. All total, it was an average of about eight years that people were leaving. And so it kind of even goes back to your point, that number is even lower when you take an average. So we are looking into it, and I think it is important to look at trend data over time to see, you know, what's going on, that we'd have an average of eight. To Lyle's point, it should be a little bit more to that extent. But again, I want to caution the board as we walk through this because you have to think about last year. I mean, there were people, we have movement, and it didn't happen last year. It didn't happen across the country, across the state. We're seeing, going to see a little bit of movement this year and even more so the following year. So it's just going to, and I think you asked for trend data, so over the next, last 10 years, and that will provide a different picture.
Do, when you do an exit interview with an individual who might be in a building, do you share that information with the principal of that school or for that building? Do they get any feedback, like, you know, it's because of this climate, because of this individual in this building, or that's never ever shared? Not given by name, but, you know, if there's a problem in the building, and I'm telling you about it with you, with Kingsley, do you ever bring that feedback to the building?
Yeah, we'd have to. I wouldn't give names to that extent. But I would, you know, I'd go through a different protocol as far as like, hey, something's up, what's going on? I may not necessarily alert the building principal right away because I want to, you know, make sure there's some factual basis by which this complaint has emerged. For example, with special ed, there were a number of concerns when I got to the district around special education. And it was just the amount of IEPs. And so that was something I did share with Ivan, just to say like, hey, that's becoming an issue. And he was able to look more closely at roster size to ensure that staff weren't getting rosters of like 12, 15 because doing IEPs on a regular basis makes it tough.
Thank you.
But with the shortage of all employees, I mean, no matter what profession you're in right now, there's a shortage of everybody. But especially, you know, in our case, a shortage of teachers, I think it is really important that we don't have teachers leaving because of climate issues.
And I would save, if we, sorry, board, I was just going to say, Kingsley also has a report that's coming up, too. So if there's anything that you think of, we can, we've already got you up here. But I just was, we're kind of off of what this actual.
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
Item is right now, but I'm okay with that, so go ahead.
No, and I was just going to.
Do you want to just do your update? I mean, are you guys okay while we're talking about it? Are you all in with that?
Is that okay, Pam, procedurally? This is just non-information. Okay.
I just feel like we're already having this discussion, and it makes sense to just continue down this path. Sue, did you have a question, though?
I did. As far as the trends, though, I think we might be surprised to see because I think in any profession, younger people are switching jobs a lot more often. I mean, the trends of that, I mean, I read a survey, a story on, someone by the time they're 40 would probably have seven jobs. You know, so I think that that is something we will have to look to combat, obviously with pay and that type of thing. But I just think that younger people tend to be more transitional and mobile. I mean, they're not stick and stay like our generation, Lyle, that worked at a job for 35 years and retired.
And not only that, you also got the fact of more companies that are allowing virtual work, so people are being able to relocate where they want to live, still work remotely and come in for just shorter periods of time. So we may get impacted by some of that transitionalness there.
And that's part of, we can't control everything, but there are some things within that.
Yeah.
You know, that we can control, and we ought to at least know what they are, and then decide, can we control them? And if so, you know, what it's going to, is the cost-benefit ratio worth it?
And Sue, just to comment back on your point, you know, obviously, the board has addressed pay, and I appreciate that. I mean, the district appreciates that. I know our teachers have. And across our district, they have. But one of the things that, going back to some of the data that you talked about that we look at a lot, not only necessarily in public schools, but also across industries, is that, you know, the younger generation tends to move based on benefits and service. And so we really tried to spend a lot of time on that. Again, I point to maybe the last update or the update before, where Dr. Lindeman mentioned, her goal was to say, what will make Waterloo the best employment place to be? And I take that obviously farther, not necessarily just the Cedar Valley, but the state and the nation. And I think our benefit package is really, is very comprehensive and very competitive. And I think we need to do a better job of marketing that because I can, actually, it's part of the update, so I'm going to wait. But there's some things in the update that I think will speak to some of the issues that we're going to speak to.
We're saying, go ahead and do your update.
Yep, yep.
But you know what, before we do that, can we first, let me just, we've got this motion on the table. Can we do the personnel appointments and adjustments, and then let Mr. Bachway do his report? Is that okay? Okay, awesome. So all those in favor of approving the personnel appointments and adjustments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Stacy, I can't hear you, just want to make sure you're there. All right? And Chair votes aye, that motion carried. So we can rest that and go ahead and move to your report, your personnel report.
Perfect. So, you know, again, let me know if you have questions. I'll just hit some of the finer points because it's come up in conversation. It listed the number of resignations and retirements that we have right now. We do have six new teachers that have completed the hiring process and are waiting board approval, and 16 others have received recommendations for hire. So sometimes you're just not seeing the swap out of those positions. And that's also what makes it tough when you're looking at it from your vantage point. I will say that we have some math and science positions that are difficult to fill, and that's what we're spending the majority of our time. So what Lorene will do is she'll do almost a drag of the list to see, okay, who has the certifications that may not have necessarily gotten a job yet? And again, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're bad teachers or anything along those lines, it's just that they may have, you know, gotten, not gotten a pick over somebody that has some experience, whatever the case may be. And so we're working on that in conjunction with trying to fill all the other positions. Any questions on the, just the hiring update stuff? Okay. Letters of Assignments and Contracts, and so this data is also old. And that's why I usually wait to give it to you at the board table because I have the most up-to-date information. But, you know, I wanted to make sure you had some time to read it, too. But we also, so we sent out Letters of Assignments for WSP and Ask Me Employee Group last week. Our teacher contracts return has changed, it's 90%. It's no longer 81%, it's 90% right now. Over the next two days, spent a lot of time answering questions around, like, what does this mean? What options do I have? And so the next two days is going to be full as far as just people trying to navigate that contract process and see what their options are.
And the contracts are due when?
Wednesday, May 12th. The end of the day, so midnight, Wednesday, May 12th.
So when you say return, do you mean agreed to?
Decided, and so it could either be an intent to return or not to return.
Okay, so.
Which is why you see some of the number of the resignations you see on this as well. Some people have already shared that information with us. Any questions on that? Benefit and Wellness Update, you know, I'm not going to go through all these things just because it's a lot of information here. But this is the information I receive on a monthly basis, and Erica receives on a monthly basis. Just to give her some kudos, she basically runs our entire benefit and wellness department, so to speak. I mean, she was going to be here tonight, but unfortunately is not feeling well. But I just want to give her kudos because as much as I may come up here and do the smile and wave about our organization, she puts the effort and the work in to do many different things as it relates to it. And so I can't speak about the amazing benefits we have unless I mention her and the work that she does. She meets with them weekly, so it's just totally different gamut in respect to. She meets with them weekly, so it's just totally different gamut in respect to what I've had. What I would ask you to look at is just the clinic, again, just for obviously the public's perspective as well. We've done a good job of pushing the visits up, right now we have about twenty per week, eighty per month. We're now setting that as the average, we were about at over a hundred, a hundred and twenty in October, November, and that's when you saw COVID kind of skyrocket in the community as well. So we understand that, but now that COVID has dissipated, I think we're at three point five percent countywide as far as that rate. It's nice to see it at eighty, and obviously we're not resting on our laurels, we're trying to push that up as much as possible to ensure that staff are using it as much as they can. And so we we should see a bump in the summer just because of the availability of staff to utilize it in conjunction of not working in a sense. But we're excited about that benefit, and that's a benefit that we tout out when we recruit as well. Hey, we know where you're coming from, we know that you may pay benefits elsewhere, but here is still a no cost option for the majority of our staff, it's a low cost for HSA such as myself.
How's that, what's the feedback been on the facility location?
Awesome, awesome, I think they appreciate it not being in the district where I wanted it to be, I wanted to be in this building, but it's good that it, it's good that it's not. And Trish has been phenomenal, the level of care has been just awesome. It's, you know, it's, it's, I always call it like an urgent care plus, it's just got that higher standard. And the, just so for again, the public's knowledge, she's not only a nurse practitioner, but she's advanced with her degrees as well in that area, so we have somebody that's beyond what you would normally get at a standard urgent care. So we're just, we're excited, I mean, obviously I'm not saying it in my voice, but because I talk about it so much, I know how awesome she is, and so it's just amazing benefit that we have for employees.
So was there an initial expectation or a level of where you would define success in terms of percent of participants or weekly calls or probably calls elsewhere? That, you know, was it was expected when when this center was initiated?
I would say that we're right at that amount, you know? This is gonna be awkward because they'll say that, you know, we were good at probably sixty a month. I don't think that's enough, you know, I need to, I need to see an R O I that's significantly higher. And so if we don't get to that a hundred to a hundred and twenty, I'm concerned. And so again, even with all these metrics, I will have it with the caveat, you know, health partners thinks we're doing outstanding. And I will say in comparison to their book of business, we are doing outstanding. But, you know, outstanding isn't A plus, in that sense, it's just an A. And so we're trying to push as much as possible, again, to make sure that our employees are aware of these benefits, but also utilizing the clinic as much as possible.
I think Lyle asked this question, but I didn't hear, I didn't hear his question too well. So from these numbers, approximately how many of our staff members are taking advantage of this? Do you know?
I don't know, I don't know off the top of my head, I don't know off the top of my head. Because it's, you're right, the numbers don't necessarily show, the number of visits aren't single people, they're, I mean, if I go five times, it plays a role in the number of visits. Let me get back to you on that information as well.
Or your family members, you know, like if you have four kids.
Yeah, yeah, they all count as a visit, so let me get back to you on that.
Twenty percent of the month if you have kids.
I mean, we want to, again, and I'm glad you asked that question because I can answer it this way. We want to make sure that people are are moving towards a very high, highly effective valued care, but also low cost. And that's what this clinic provides. However, we want people to see their doctor. I mean, at the end of the day, if they have a tried and true doctor that they stayed with or a provider that they stayed with, we still want them to utilize this. It's just when we have those situations or instances where they're going to an emergency or urgent care, or maybe even going to an emergency room when it's not necessarily an emergency. Sometimes it's just a time of day that sometimes people go that makes it so they go to the emergency room instead of urgent care. We want people to start thinking about, you know, preventing those type of things ahead of time. So if you're not feeling well, instead of waiting until you're almost deathly ill and have to go to the emergency room at one A M and at night, let's go to the clinic, go to the clinic at eight A M, get see, get yourself checked out and then go from there. So it's this, the process is a mindset shift about healthcare. And so that's, there's more to come, you know? I think that when we just got off our call with the vice president of the company, you know, that's a part of what we were working towards. This is a shift in mindset that we want people to be paying attention to their healthcare costs. We want people to pay pay attention to their healthcare, we want people to go first, ask questions later instead of asking questions and then going later.
I will say that a lot of people are, when anything's new, they wait. And it hasn't been a full year yet, and you know, a lot of people's benefit contracts don't start till July one. So you know, now that you have gone through the trenches with this program and the feedback has been very positive, word of mouth spreads like wildfire, that really does help. So, you know, you mentioned the benefits of having good benefits and having service, but relationships are always key to anything that you do, you know, relationship with your doctor, your relationship in your building. So I think having the history that you have now will maybe make a big difference as these people retire, we have new people come in and they'll want to know how that's working out, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'll be interested to see the numbers though.
Yeah, is there a continuous improvement loop or we monitor satisfaction somehow?
Sure do, I just got my survey, oh yes, you get a survey every single time that you were there.
So we know when someone
They they won't share, they won't share that information with us, but I have requested that in the aggregate. So they won't share like, Dr. Lindeman fills it out and says, this experience is terrible, they won't share that. But I will say that again, Erica has, now she doesn't have weekly meetings with them, but I do believe she has monthly meetings with the coordinator for the clinic to see like, okay, how are things going, are employees able, I mean, it's, it's really a large operation to run in that sense. And so we do get that feedback and saying like, hey, the nurses or the assistant that's there as well, the physician assistants that there would say, you know, hey, employees don't, aren't liking this, is there something we can change? One of the things was the concern about who's sending the emails out and my confidentiality. And so we then requested an email from Matt so they can have a, I can't remember the name of it now, but you would have received an email, all of you, from Trish about the center and the video and everything else, and it came from Employee Wellness Center. So staff could feel comfortable not getting an email from outside the organization. So that was one of the feedback, that that's something we changed right away.
But I'm guessing wait time and general convenience and hours would be pretty high up on the list that determine whether people go there or not?
Correct, and those things are going well.
Okay.
Again, we're, we're gonna see a spike in the summer months just because the majority of our staff may be working, but they're working, you know, providing, going to professional development and other things, but they're not teaching kids on a regular basis, it's inherent flexibility.
The one thing I would say is that as, to India's point, I think as we go through an entire cycle, people will get used to using it beyond just urgent care because it it does cause a mind shift. For example, I had, you know, I had knee surgery in January, and so when the doctor called to set me up with a a pre, what do they call it, pre-surgery physical or whatever, it dawned on me, I thought, you know what, I wonder if I can go there. So I said, can I go to our Waterloo Schools Clinic? And they said, oh, yeah, you can. So they just faxed it over, I did it, and and it was great, and I never, I I thought, well, why not do that? I just got a shingle shot, got my second shingle shot, and they, you know, set set those kind of things up. So people are starting to think beyond just, I have a sore throat, I'm gonna run over to see. And that's, it just takes a mind shift, you just have to think of it as a full service care, they can do, you know, everything, so.
And it's free, I mean, again, this is why, because it's free, or again, free for the majority of our staff, this is where we want you to wear it out, like use it as much as possible, you know? Not to say that you can't obviously go to your doctor during your annual checkups and things along those lines, but it's important. The other two parts that I'll mention before you had that question, Lyle, just because the other part of this that you don't know, and actually, Dr. Lindeman, I haven't had a chance to talk to you about it as well, but we are expanding the virtual options. And so again, we don't want to be the best employee health center in the state, we want to be the best virtual experience as well. So we'll be, she already, Tricia already does virtual visits, we want to make sure that employees are aware of that and expand it even more. And then we should be on the the front edge or the cutting edge of looking at it for workers comp as well. And so getting out virtual visits and having that be a part of our 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 package is important. And then last but not least, I want to again, go back to Dr. Lindeman's comments, two meetings ago around the focus groups. You know, a lot of stuff is still in the wings and it just takes time over the summer to get some of the stuff done. But as we're talking about benefits, we're already gonna be meeting with a group to talk about maternity leave and what additional options can we provide to employees? We're working on getting a family care planner or maybe changing some of the job duties within our department. So when teachers come to us, going back to your point, Sue, we can talk to them about like, what does it mean to plan? What does it mean to work through some of these things that some of our teachers are having difficulty with now? Those are things that other places aren't doing, and we're excited about that because this is coming up from them, that these are areas that are important. And so this is where we're moving, this is where we're pushing because, again, as you look at the data, you're right, Lyle, it isn't about pay. And so our focus, and if you go down to my board right now, is focused on wellness, climate and culture, diversity and accountability. And so two of those areas are being covered under our conversation right now, that wellness and benefits matter and it matters to our employees feeling good about themselves, feeling well, and but then also ensuring that that climate and culture as well too. And so I'll make sure I have an update for that, for our June update as well.
I was just, oh, sorry, I wondered like, physicals for athletics. Are they gonna be doing that for staff, kids and athletic physicals?
Yeah, they can, they can now, we just need to make sure we get that word out that you can use that opportunity.
And then what about counseling, has there ever been any addition to do counseling there?
Not yet, that's not necessarily Tricia's role, she's a provider, but we do have a wealth of counseling offerings that we provide. One through a E A P with Unity Point, that's where traditionally we send people, but we also use Blackhawk Gundy Mental Health Center, we also use the new Elevate, the mobile center that's going to be used as well. And so I'll send that to you just as an email because we have that already listed on our website. And we also look at it from a diverse offering as well, we want to make sure that if people feel comfortable working with somebody that is both racially and ethnic matched, we want to make sure we're paying attention to that too.
Right, and I was just thinking as far as keeping, pulling people to that building for everything, like your one stop shop, you know, something like that.
We're working on it, it, we want to get people comfortable with Trish first before we add additional people, but that's something that we've been considering.
I will say you walk ten steps in and they see you instantly, so there is no wait time, no walk time, so it is a huge benefit, so. Thank you for being flexible and
Yeah, no problem.
Taking our questions kind of out of order, so. Lyle, I have a, the next item on our agenda then is the I JAG M O U, and I actually have a favor to ask you, there's a typo in the in the, what am I trying to say, in the recommendation? And it should read twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, so when you read it, will you add that, please?
I will.
For the secretary, thank you. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
I recommend the Board of Education approve the I JAG memorandum memorandum of understanding with East High, is this the right one?
Yes.
Yeah, with East High School for students in grades nine through twelve and I JAG memorandum of understanding with Carver Academy for students in grade seven and eight for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year at a total cost of sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, India, and discussion, and I know we have both Stephanie Mohren and Mr. Parker here this evening, nice to see you. And discussion.
Yeah, I guess I'm not clear exactly what this program does. Does it coordinate jobs? Says work-based learning and or develop in conjunction with the administration, work-based learning and or job shadowing experiences and then develop jobs, internships or apprenticeships, opportunities for I JAG graduates, provide transportation. Elsewhere, it says it's kind of a program, so I'm confused, is this a academic program? That's offered either curricular or ex-curricular? Or is it a coordination effort to line up jobs with whoever, different organizations, different public or private organizations for this fairly limited group of what, forty kids?
Right now, the forty is just for Carver, for East High, our goal is at least a hundred kids.
Okay.
For the the two different specialists that we have at East High, we have a nine-ten specialist and an eleven-twelve specialist.
Okay, so what do they do?
And I'm gonna let Mr. Parker talk more about that.
Hello, board, it is a, it is an actual curriculum class and a and a course. The students that attend, as they come in, they start actually in middle school, that's where the the Carver component is. Then they go into a nine-ten focus and an eleven-twelve focus. They work with all of our students on on things to have, build them up to be able to be kind of like employability. They work on resume writing, they take them, they bring in speakers to talk to them about different careers to get them focused on, to get them a career focus, not just a job focus, which is one of the things that we've been kind of working with them a little bit more on. They have forty different competencies that are listed that they work through to develop them. So we're actually even now are kind of as our as our actual other courses focus on putting a scope and sequence in as to what they're gonna be working on each month. We're actually working with them on what speakers they have in each month, what trips they'll be going on, what competency they will be developing with our students each month, so we kind of map that out. So you'd be to kind of actually see all of the things that they work on to develop them, to develop with our kids to be more employable. So it is, it starts in sixth grade, it goes all the way up to twelfth grade. We're engaging them right now to incorporate more apprenticeships and internships because that is actually part of their program that they will be allowed an internship or an apprenticeship as as part of, as part of it. They do a lot of work with scholarships to help our students get scholarships as well. So even though they're work, they're working on on career readiness and preparation, they're also working on helping them with scholarships also.
So are these the same kids through seven through twelve?
If if we can maintain it, yes, the the hope is to get them to to maintain in the program from sixth grade all the way up, so those students that are in, they stay in. We're actually working, as Dr. Mohren just just expressed, on engaging more students into the program as much as as much as we can. So that's something, it's actually a partnership that we're pushing even now with the Career Center because so they're not competing against each other, they're working with. We, I just had a meeting with leadership within I JAG and my counselors and the specialists so we can have more collaboration with the work that we're doing between I JAG and the school. So we're pushing a lot of things that, so we're working more more with how they're preparing and developing kids with our, with, even with the Career Center and the development that they're getting while they're in the I JAG program also.
So it's twenty to twenty-five kids per grade?
It's it's not broken up by grade, the nine-ten, the nine-ten component, right now they're targeted at having at least fifty, at least fifty students. And eleven-twelve is touted at having fifty students, so that that could break up a little bit differently, but for each, each, we have two specialists, and for each of them, they're working with about fifty students.
So this develop jobs, internships and so forth, that's after they graduate or?
No, that's while they're in the program.
While they're in the program. So how many internships are there?
That information right now, I I don't have that, I know the target right now is for them, for all of the students while they're in the program to actually, to actually get that. That's, that interesting that you asked that, that was part of the discussion that we recently had in our meeting, which was, I believe, when, last, just last week, to work on tracking all of our, all of the students that are in the program, working with our counselors, which is why we work collaboratively with them. Who, what internship are you going in, kind of like working with them a little more closely on their career development and making sure that they get an internship or an apprenticeship as part of the program? Because I know the Career Center really works on that also, which is why we want to work more together with them on that part.
So who goes out and generates these opportunities?
The specialists, that's part of what they do, they're, they have a community focus and a and a job focus where they're going out, making connections with businesses and corporations. And they're brings, bringing them in, some as speakers, some as potential internship and apprenticeships. Our focus right now is we just don't want it just to be a job focus, we want to make sure we expand it to careers as far as where, as we get some of our, some of our students who thinking of going into law, thinking of going into med school, thinking of going into different things, so they're not thinking of the program as just to get a job. You know, we want to make sure we establish that with some of the, some of the vocational careers that they can get into, so we maintain a career focus as well. So we try, we're working on establishing a tracking with that so we can maintain that. But our focus is, to your point, making sure that there is an apprenticeship, internship as part of that program. So as kids, as we, as we sell and talk to students about going into the program, it's not just, well, I have a job, I don't need this program, it's no, we're, we want to make sure we continue to work. It's no, we're, we want to make sure we continue to work with as many of our students as possible to have them able to put together, um, a good resume to be able to present themselves, uh, to go out and connect and network with different, uh, companies, organizations as well.
I guess I would submit there's not a conflict between jobs and careers that perhaps the best preparation for a career is a job, no matter what.
Yeah.
You know, and the other.
Just like the Career Center, we do try to give them exposure in areas of interest because you, you absolutely, a job serving ice cream at McDonald's is, you're still going to learn from that. But if you want to be an engineer, it makes sense to try out something that could be aligned to that. It's not bad to do something unrelated. Matter of fact, we have people who can learn all kinds of things from that. Case in point, the story that you shared with me about your daughter, but, but if they, if they want to try it out and they say, gosh, I've always wanted to be a nurse and we can get them some experience in that, rule it out now. If you don't want to do it, you're still going to learn something from that. So, and it really does have to do with career development and all of the things that we go in, that go into career development, which is exposure to a lot of different jobs. Um, self-interest, aptitude, attitude, all of those things, um, plans and then work-based learning. And so all of those four things have to do with, uh, so it's, it's really getting them prepared for a job as a graduate, which makes sense because it's job J, right?
So the scope, the breadth of the program, whatever it is, a hundred and forty, uh, why is it not two hundred and eighty?
Because that number is capped by the state. That's the program itself. So it is a, it is, it's a state program. And so it is, it's mandatory that it is fifty kids. That's the way the program is set up. So we don't actually even hold the contract on the employees.
Per school or per?
Per program. So there's a freshman sophomore program capped at fifty. There's a junior senior program capped at fifty. And then the middle school programs are at forty.
Per district or per?
Per program. So if you, we have three programs. We have three programs. You could have four programs. You could have ten programs. But each one of those are, we don't hold the contract on them. We just pour, pay a portion of the salary. So if you had ten programs, we're going to pay a portion of each person's salary and we don't hold their contract. They're not Waterloo Schools employees.
So is that good or bad? I mean, what, what if we had ten?
It's the way that it, it's the way it is.
You say, what if we had ten programs?
Yeah.
Well, uh, the thing would make sure that we have the, the number of students to actually fill all, all of the program. That's some, one of the things we're working on right now. Um, I, I think the program is great as far as, as far as the work that it, it can actually do for some of our, some of our students. Um, where it, it does feel a need for exposing some of our students to careers, which is, which is one of the, which is one of the outcomes that we really want to get out of it, to expose our students as much as they can so they can see different things. Uh, even with, like I said, uh, like Dr. Lindman mentioned, the work that they're doing at the Career Center, getting our kids to see and try different things. Um, they bring in speakers from different, different careers, different backgrounds. They're able to meet, talk, work, you know, and get information that they wouldn't normally get. So our, our charge right now is to make sure that we bring in as much as we can. Cause we have options with respect to resources and that, uh, we can ask them, these, um, do career surveys and inventories of our kids to get ideas of what they want and then bring that into, bring that in so that our kids can actually meet and see and have these conversations that they wouldn't normally be able to have. So we are able to do a lot with them and we probably, we will be kind of working more collaborative with them than we ever have before after some of the conversations we've been having.
Do we have like an idea of like, I don't know, we've been to IJAG for a number, number of years. Do we have like a, you know, list of like Waterloo IJAG alumni that have done some great things that, you know, something we could share?
That they do share the success.
Very distinct metrics that are go, go along with this. And kind of like, if you remember the, the last session, we talked about communities and schools and the mental, mental health counseling that they do. And I talked about the fact that it's one of many programs. So for this, if we were going to, every time we expand, they, the, the system at the state level has to go look for donors to do the rest of that, the rest of the salary. So we pay a portion and they have donors who do the rest. So they may go to John Deere. They may go to, you know, some foundation. They may do a variety of things. So it's a, it's a joint partnership as, it's kind, think of it like a grant. So it's a, it's, it's a grant that they do to bring a program in. And so at one time, we only had the, we only had the, um, junior senior program and the eleventh, twelfth grade. And then they got some grant dollars and they were ready to expand. And so they called us and they said, would you be willing to match that? Or, you know, to bring in your other, whatever it is, twenty-two, twenty-three thousand dollars. And then we'll expand to a freshman sophomore. And then later on, years later, they came back and they said that. So as people want to expand and has, as they have donors for this particular grant program, that's how it expands.
I mean, it might be neat to have some, you know, testimonials from some of our students that have entered the program to let us know, kind of see the value on the backside of what we're doing. I mean, we talk about it on the front side, but what, what, what's our?
Well, that, that is something that they do track, you know?
Yeah, but I don't think we, maybe they'll always see that, you know, it might be good to be able for us to see.
I, I know we've had a testimonial, if I'm not mistaken, come here. Um, out of that IJAG program, um, a young man that, um, graduated out of that program is now Iowa State, uh, University Junior, I think. And he brought back to the Waterloo Schools, um, the junior Nesby Engineering Program. Uh, young man by the name of, uh, Mr. Putman, who was an East High graduate. Um, so he's working closely with, he's an intern at John Deere, uh, when he's not in school. So, I mean, that's one of the success, success stories. I'm, I'm pretty familiar with the program. I like that, um, it starts in the middle school. Um, and then those students, you know, that choose to go forward. And if they do, you know, they get what they, what they provide at the middle school, but also all the way up to high school. And I know there's been some, uh, testimonials and, and some good things come out of that program. Uh, so I think it's a very beneficial program. Um, I've been trying to get that young man to come back.
I think I recall that now, you know, you say that, uh.
And Lyle, I was just going to say, I, I just know from the community perspective, and because this is a statewide program. I, students that participate in IJAG are, I think they're recruited, they're, they're wanted, they have experience. They come through as a, you know, I don't want to call them a cohort, but I feel like they kind of, they kind of come up together. And I just know from my other, from my real life job, that, that IJAG students are very well respected because of the experiences that they have had. Um, I would just echo what Aster said. So.
So how many contact hours are involved during the school day for the program?
Oh, they just have a class. They, they have one class that they meet.
Every day?
Yeah, per day. They have one class that they meet per day.
So one period a day is?
And they, and they have that throughout the year.
Seven through twelve.
You can actually probably be a guest speaker.
You can go sit in on a class.
I was just trying to get.
Required community service hours they have to do as part of IJAG as well, outside of the school day.
I just tried to get a handle on the restrictions. I mean, I'm not, I'm a little bit facetious on this, but wouldn't this benefit every kid?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it, it could. And then, and something like that would, but, uh, like Dr. Lindman mentioned, uh, for the program, they, the state does have limits on.
So with financial literacy.
This is an extra, this is an extra piece though. There's specific criteria for the student who would, who, who meets the criteria for IJAG. So it is a speci, and if you want, we can bring that in, but there is, there is specific criteria that I can send to you at a separate time that, that for a student, they have to, they have to meet the qualifications. They have to get interviewed and then they're accepted into the program. So it is not a, it is, it is not a universal application. It is a specific set of criteria.
And this says, Lyle, initially certain at-risk students. So they, there's, you know, it's not any kid can do it. It's an at-risk.
Sue's mic.
At-risk kid.
Yep. So I, you know, we can get you more of that, but.
So we could supplement it with a Waterloo Schools JAG program for all kids.
We can and we do. I mean, we have, you know, it, it actually is akin to several different things that we have. But the, if you look at the counseling standards that we are applying, they, they fit into this.
I'm with you, Lyle.
That, yeah.
Actually, a lot that happened at the Career Center is, is consistent with a lot of things that they do already.
Okay, very good. It's, it's beneficial all the way around.
India still got one question that we're going to wrap this up.
Um, I'm just curious how this class, if I guess a junior is able to take this class, but do they still have time to be able to go to the Career Center in their schedule? As far as, how did the scheduling work? If a student is wanting to take classes at the Career Center, but also stay in IJAG?
Yeah, that, that was a, that was something that was a little challenging for us in the past year because the, the specialist that we had, the ninth and tenth grade, um, taught and those classes were in the morning and the eleventh and twelfth were in the afternoon. And so if someone was in a Career Center during a time where the IJAG was only offered during that time, it was, it was a challenge. Which is one of the reasons we had this meeting recently. So what we did was we broke up how our, the classes were being offered. So if you're, uh, the ninth and tenth grade specialist will have a class throughout the day, as will the eleventh and twelfth grade specialist. So they will have an opportunity to have a class when they go to the Career Center. And that's why I was, as I was speaking about the collaboration with the Career Center, so they can do both and be able to be engaged in both of those.
So the block when they're not, that, when they're back in the, in the building.
They'll be able to.
The shorter, you know, the shorter blocks coming to the Career Center will help with that too.
For sure. Yep.
So is this a Carnegie unit elective?
Yeah, it's in a selective class.
And what is it, Volender?
It, it is, um, it's C, it's C A R.
I'm not sure the code of which section it is.
It's C A R, um, yeah.
Career, yeah. It's a SCED code under CAR, uh, careers.
Thank you for coming tonight and explaining a little bit more about IJAG. We learned a lot tonight.
But thank you for the question.
Right. He's going to be like, wow, I'm never coming back to talk to the board again. They keep me here. So. All right. Then all those in favor of approving the IJAG MOU, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Stacy, are you there? All right. And, um, chair votes aye, motion carried. I, yeah, I didn't hear. Yeah. So, okay. We will move on then to item M. This is a first reading of a board policy change for substitute teachers. Um, this is just for information only and you all can see, I know Tara's coming up, that you could all see, um, what is being proposed here with the strike-throughs. And I don't know if there are any questions for Tara regarding this.
Yeah, is this a expansion of certification or?
I will defer to Dr. Bachway, who holds this policy since he is present.
And you thought your presenting was done?
It says substitute teachers must be licensed to teach. And then it says substitute license. So are we talking that they have to be fully licensed? Or is there still a substitute authorization?
There's two. So there's a license for a sub and there's a substitute authorization.
But now you're changing it that you have to be licensed instead of substitute authorization?
They need to be licensed to teach, which is either the substitute authorization or the normal substitute license.
It's one or the other, Lyle. It's not both. It's a license that is.
So the license includes?
Is the substitute authorization.
Authorization.
So what does this policy change?
Not a lot.
I was, what I thought is that it just cleaned it up a little bit and added the B O E E information. But maybe I'm, I wasn't on policy, but that's kind of what I thought.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, I really just took a, I took most of the ISB policy and, and our policies and just put it together. And I took out all the other stipulations because one of the things that happened with COVID, we were out of compliance some parts of this year. And so instead of putting it in the policy, making it a little bit more general, so we could have that flexibility that when there are changes, such as an emergency proclamation, or there's some upcoming changes for substitute authorizations, but also for pairs subbing the classroom, that it doesn't have to come before the board. Uh, we can just make those changes internally as we do for any type of change in the Department of Ed or, or applicable law.
Assuming there was some rationale for the no more than five consecutive days or no more than ten days in a thirty-day period for a job assignment, that's being wiped out, I believe.
It's not wiped out. It's currently the policy that the subs have to adhere to. It's just removing it from our policy because that was wiped out for the pandemic. So even currently, that was taken away and subs were able to, um, essentially substitute authorizations were able to be in sub assignments for a longer time period. I just want, didn't want it in the policy because then it locked us in, even though we're not compliant with the current law.
So we basically put it in the handbook.
Correct.
So that, uh, which is what we normally do as a board. We keep our policies so that we don't have to change them constantly, but we update the handbook every year.
Or every, or every time it needs to be changed. So anytime that we came to the board and you made a change as far as pay, I wanted to make sure that people paid attention to the handbook in regards to that. So sending everybody to the substitute handbook that's on our team drive that everybody has access to.
So it's still our normal operating practice to have no more than five consecutive days or ten days in thirty. Is that correct?
That's correct for a substitute authorization. Correct. It makes it really tricky. And if you want to fight with the B O E on that, I would be right there with you. I'll drive you down there myself. It's really tough for our substitute authorizations because, no, I'm just, we, sub, it, it, Margaret just recently sent out a sub. And I say recently, probably four months ago, asking about the sub-climate. Many districts across the state have said they had issues with subs. I think a direct way of addressing it that other states do is by using the substitute authorization policy or something similar to that to affect it. We get, can get different people in our buildings to work with our students and again, to give our teachers a break. The fact that, you know, our, I won't say anything more. It's just, it's a irritation that I think could be easily served by looking just next door at different policy, but.
So I think I'm hearing you say that, I think I'm hearing you say that the actual, those restrictions aren't always in the best interest.
Absolutely. They're not in the best interest of kids.
All right. So we're taking those restrictions out and just using?
No, we have to follow, we have to follow the restrictions.
The B O E E ones, we have to.
It's, it's, but as far as are they in the best interest of kids to have somebody that, I can tell you right now, there's a, um, and she won't mind me saying this, but Carolyn Stevenson, she works at Cunningham. She's our substitute authorization building sub over there. It's a phenomenal job working with kids. She knows the kids from the community. Um, prior to the COVID situation, she was not able to work more, more than five consecutive days, no more than ten days in a thirty-day assignment. There were times where we had teachers that had maternity leave, other leave. She could not consistently stay in the room. And so she would rotate in and out and it was a problem for kids. It's, it's just not a good idea. So. But we're, all this policy is focusing on is allowing us the flexibility to make the changes that we need to make in the handbook and leaving this to more of the thirty thousand foot level as far as the regulatory issues.
Which is, which is, that was what I was saying about the board. That's very typical for board policy to stay at the thirty thousand and, and put some of that information. We do that with other things.
Yeah.
Would you share the handbook?
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if all of us have access to the, but would you like to see it?
Yeah.
The link to it? Okay.
So I think, again, forgive me if I don't understand this, but I think we're saying that by taking this out, any deviation will no longer violate school board policy, but it will still violate state policy.
Correct.
Correct.
But it's, it's good though, if, if, if there's a change to state policy, we don't, we're still, we can just go on the fly if I happen to.
So what's the penalty for, for violating this for, for six days instead of five consecutive days?
You know, it's, it's a, it's a question of, um, not only intent, but regularity. I try to stay away from Joanne Tubbs when it comes to that because she looks favorably on my work. Um, and so right now, we've been in compliance. And I think if you ask Joanne right now, she would say that Waterloo does a phenomenal job of staying in compliance and as flexible as possible within those regulations. Um, so I don't know what the felony is. I can find that information out, but I try to stay.
Let's not screw it. Okay. Yeah, let's not. Right. And we're not even voting on this tonight. So.
Well, if it's bad policy though, we ought to, we ought to change it.
Well, I think, I, you know, regardless of what the state policy is, then I, it'd be nice to change it. Cause I think stability, even as in the sub, is good for kids, you know?
Yeah.
If you have, you have an effective sub, she's, you know, the sub is able to. But we can make a change though, right?
And it's just for the public's interpretation of this. I mean, again, we're talking about, in Lyle's point, this is changing the board policy to keep it at the thirty thousand foot level. We'll stay, make all the regulatory changes as it relates to in our substitute handbook. I'll send a copy of that. Uh, it's just important to note, again, for the public, the B O E is listening, um, different areas have different demographic populations. And so when you look at areas such as, uh, in Iowa City, Des Moines, other places that have a large university to potentially supplement that population, it works a lot better. And even though we have Cedar Falls in our back door, primarily those subs go to Cedar Falls. And so, um, we're just in a different demographic population, different work environment. And so some flexibility would be nice.
Thank you. Thank you, Tara. And we'll look forward to having this back on our agenda then on the twenty-fourth of May, correct? Thank you. Thank you, Tara. And we'll look forward to having this back on our agenda then on the 24th of May, correct? Two weeks? All right. All right, then the next item on our agenda is item N. This is the SBRC Modified Allowable Growth Request for the Waterloo Career Center New Program Startup Costs. And the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education approves the appearance at the SBRC Committee to request modified allowable growth of $227,179.45 for the costs associated with startup costs for Waterloo Career Center Programs for the 2020-2021 and that this increased allowable growth may be funded by 2021-2022 cash reserve levies.
Sub move.
Thanks, Jesse, and second, Sue. And discussion, Mr. Coughlin, you have the microphone.
Yes, thank you. This is just an extension of the application we brought to the SBRC a month, six weeks ago. And kind of the, the background of that is I wasn't really aware that that was a program that we could go to the SBRC to get the initial, the initial allowable growth to fund that program. And the idea of the WCC and what it has accomplished and the vision of the district and all that you are very well aware of, we have gone through and are going through in the future, the SBRC was wowed. They were absolutely on board with everything the district is doing. And Jeff Ross was with me and did most of the talking and you know how excited he can get about all of that. And was able to answer all their questions and the details and all of the history and where we're going and so on. Well, the one question that really came up from the SBRC was to start a new program, the normal procedure is you go to the SBRC the year before the program starts to say, can we have the allowable growth to allow us to make our expenditures to run that program? So they were asking, why are you going four years back? And that was just the, the conversation about not really knowing that was something that we could do. But also, um, the application that we brought to them was the first four years of the program through 1920 with the actual costs. So they could do that. And they said, well, really, we want to do it the year before. Well, they did approve all four years in the last visit and it was 1.1 million dollars so, so forth in allowable growth. But because they added another SBRC meeting to this year's schedule, which is in June, because of all of the ESER issues going on, I jumped on board with this to say, let's put through our current costs. We don't have a lot planned for next year yet that I can put hard numbers to. And then there will be, as the WCCX becomes part of the program and all of those programs as they start up, will be eligible for allowable growth for that to at least strengthen our budget. So to get this on the docket again for them as their memory is fresh and getting the 2021 cost, startup costs of WCC and then, um, then we will be caught up with them, for them to approve the authority for this year's program.
So for next year, I know you said you don't quite have those all yet, but will we request those then right away in the, okay?
Yeah, they have, I think normally three meetings a year.
Okay.
So fall, mid-year and spring.
Super.
So we will do that as soon as we know what those are.
Okay.
Does it left, if we modify a program, does we got any authority there to go back? So we, we start one program, then we modify it to be a little different than what it originally intended to be?
It's really the initial.
Startup.
Attempt at a program.
Okay.
Um, we are doing, if you look on here, and maybe that answers your question, Jesse, nursing was what we brought in initially. And we got the approval for that from when it started four years ago. But we've added anatomy, biomedical tech, you know, it ties right into the nursing medical field. But it is a new portion of that and yes, we are applying for that.
I understood you to say that they want an estimate for future, for forward-looking costs.
One year ahead.
One year ahead. So those invariably are estimates.
Yeah.
Yep.
So if they're not correct, do we have to go back and modify it?
No. They're just approving what we give them as a reasonable estimate and that's what we get in authority. If we decide to increase it or decrease it, it, it isn't something that we have to change in our budget or adjust on the next SBRC allocation. And if the estimate's real low, we still, this is what we get. Yep.
Yep.
What's the teacher preparation?
Pardon?
Teacher preparation. I was just noticing the class for that was a little bit dubbed almost twice as much. So on page 75.
Yep.
What is the teacher preparation?
I believe it's for teaching.
Teacher programming?
Yeah, teacher preparation is, India is asking what teacher preparation program is.
So that would be the, well, there's, there's two teacher preparation programs, but it's a, this is the K, this is the K-12 one, the one that, uh, not the early childhood.
Okay.
Because that one was already started.
Okay.
So this would be the most recent one, which would be, um, the instructor is Tammy Kennens.
Okay.
So it's the K-12 teacher prep. Because we have two teacher education program pathways. One is for the little ones, the early childhood. And then there's another one that's a more general K-12 program.
Okay, I didn't.
Yep, there's two, there's two pathways.
Got it. Thank you.
So the only reason you're not submitting 21-22 right now is you'd like to have closer estimates.
Do we have approved programs for 21-22 yet?
We do not, we are not doing any launches this year.
For this fall.
Right, for this fall.
But you have a continuation of these.
Right, but it's only for startups.
You can only do it the very first year.
Oh, just one year.
Just do it one time. Your first year.
Now, I really do believe that we will, we will be back at this when we start looking at additional programs for the expansion, some of which we may launch already next spring or, well, for the next summer. So even though the building isn't ready, we believe we might be able to bring one or two of those next summer. So those could be looked at.
There's a few of those. We'll probably need to really watch our numbers. I mean, some of the programs where it could be, the startup cost could be, in the future programs.
Oh, yeah.
And make sure our estimates are pretty good on some of that, so.
Some of those, yeah.
Yeah, that could.
All right. Thank you, Michael, for bringing this back to us and for, I love hearing it that SBRC was wowed. That's awesome. All right. So all those in favor then of approving the SBRC Modified Allowable Growth Request, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then, don't go anywhere, that takes us then to our financial services agreement, which is item O. And this recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the financial services agreement with Piper Sandler of Des Moines for the issuance of school infrastructure sales, service and use tax revenue refunding bonds.
Sub move.
Thank you, Sue. And a second?
Second.
And discussion?
I would like to just kind of entertain questions and an explanation on all three of these.
Sure.
Because they all go together. This is, um, we have bonds that have a call date that we can refinance them. Um, and there's two. And what I told the finance committee in person, I had to correct with an email last week, trying to understand which ones we're refinancing. But one of them is a $10 million bond that's about 80% paid. But there is still some savings on that and that was for projects on Hoover. And then the other was in the first 10 years of the, um, save, silo, lost, building projects that started with Cunningham and has gone all through the elementaries and has touched all of the buildings. We had built up borrowing to around $50 million. And about four or five years ago, we refinanced that and saved an estimate $5 million on the payback. It is eligible again and it's that large amount, about 35 million, that is, that is able to be, that, the actual sale of that bond was 43 and the balance left is 29 million, something like that. And we will start the process of refinancing both of those bonds to an estimating, estimated savings of about $2 million on the payback schedules. So what we are, what you had already approved tonight in the consent agenda is to set the hearing for May 24th to start this whole process. The people that are involved in making this all happen is Piper, they're the financial advisors. They are the ones that figure out what kind of payback schedule we can have. They advise us on how to set it up, how we have to have our reserve, reserve funds, um, all of the technicalities that go along with the bond sale. The second contract is with DA Davidson and they are basically the organization that organized the sale. And they go out and find the people to buy the bonds. And we will have, um, if I can remember how, there's two kinds of bonds. One's a public sale and one's a private where like a bank comes in and buys the whole thing. Or it's a public sale where, um, 20 individuals can buy 20 different years of payback. So they have to arrange that in the, um, market that's available. The whole time I've been here, we have done all of ours as private sales except for the last one. Except for Lowell. That was a public because of the COVID environment. There wasn't many banks that were looking favorably at investing in this kind of a, uh, investment tool. And I, I think that is more relaxed now as the country has recovered out of that pandemic, so we'll see what happens. But that's what DA Davidson does. And then, of course, we have to do all the legal work through Aylers of Des Moines. Beth Grobe has been doing that for 20-plus years and basically does it for everybody in the state and is the expert on it. And we have used her every single time that we have done this. So there is three contracts, but they all go together to accomplish, uh, the bond sale of refinancing those two bond issues.
And so basically, these are our fees that we're paying just for, I mean, really.
And I will send out some information.
There are professional fees, right?
I'll send out information on that of, of the $2 million in savings, how much goes to.
Yeah.
Pay for all of these.
Okay.
Uh, people to do what they do best.
Yep.
Thanks for clearing that up.
Perhaps. That's why I just wanted to say that because it took me a minute to understand it all.
And we don't do this very often, like, like you said, every four or five years maybe.
But if we're talking a couple million dollars worth of savings, then definitely it's worth looking into.
And if the bond market is not favorable, we wouldn't do it, so.
Very good.
Thank you. Sure.
So what kind of rate will we get, Sue?
Some issues today, I don't know.
I don't know, yeah.
You know, any cost savings in this kind of environment is helpful, you know, so.
Yeah.
So we have the first item is on, um, we didn't put all three on the table, but the first item is on the table and that is the, the Piper Sandler Services Agreement, which is item O. So, um, are there any specific questions about that while Michael's here? And if not, then I would entertain, like, let's go ahead and vote on that. All those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. So then let's move to item P, which is, this is the engagement letter from DA and I will, DA Davidson. And this motion is that the Board of Education approve the engagement letter with DA Davidson to serve as underwriters for 2021 School Infrastructure Sales and Service Tax Revenue Refunding Bonds.
Sub move.
Thank you, Sue. And India, second? And are there any questions about this engagement letter? All right, then seeing none, all those in favor of approving item P, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. And then that takes us to item Q. This is for the Aylers. Uh, and this is that the Board of Education approve the Legal Services Engagement Agreement with Aylers Cooney P.C. of Des Moines for the, for the issuance of school infrastructure sales, services and use tax revenue refunding bonds.
Sub move.
Thank you. And the second?
Second.
Aster and I could, we can do those too. And Pam, just for notice, there's a typo in this. It says for the, for the, just so we can clean that up, so. All right, are there any questions about the Aylers and contract agreement?
No, I was just thinking, you know, in a visual picture, you know, when you go to close on a house, you know, you have a lot of closing costs. You have the mortgage filing fee, you have the lien fee, you have the appraisal fee. That's just kind of what these services are, then to save you money on the new payment for your house. So that's kind of just the same scenario here, just on a more understandable scale. That's all I thought.
But the interest rate differential has to exceed those costs.
Right, exactly.
Right.
And we're never guaranteed of that.
No. No. Or the crystal ball. So, all right, then all those in favor of approving, uh, item Q, the Legal Services Engagement Agreement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That concludes our action items for this evening and so I will turn it over, um, to Dr. Lindeman for her superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. Just a couple things. Um, first of all, I just wanted to reference, I, I put it in my weekly update, but I wanted to reference for the public that could be listening to this, the, uh, the first career expo that we, we held last week on Wednesday. It was held at the Waterloo Career Center and we had lots and lots and lots of employers from all across the Cedar Valley who came and set up a table and brought free giveaways and they were meeting with our students. And, um, our students were able to go booth to booth to booth and talk with employers and, um, find out more information about, you know, what the, what that company was about, what the, you know, you know, maybe even talking about starting pay and all kinds of things. Summer opportunities, uh, opportunities past high school and it was just really an amazing event. To see the employers really clamoring for our kids was a really unique experience. It was just really, and I know right, right now, some of that landscape is created by just the, the worker shortage that's happening right now. So they're really looking to our kids and saying, hey, you know, maybe you can fill, fill a, um, a need for us. But, um, it was really amazing. I, I actually took a moment to go through all of the booths and just talk with some of the employers and I just wanted to look at every single person who was there and it was, you know, it, it was, it ran the gamut from healthcare to manufacturing to, um, retail to, I mean, it was, it was everything. So, um, that was a, a really, a great moment for me. And then the other thing is, um, we actually launched the Dress for Success Clothing Closet for our students. It's professional clothing that they can, can go and get and use to interview and get a job and keep a job is kind of the, um, the little slogan. And so I just really wanted to make, um, I guess take a moment right now to thank our community for supporting that at such high levels. The clothes that came in were just so helpful for our kids and, you know, there was a, and there was quite a variety. I mean, from a shirt and a tie to a full suit to just, you know, a nice polo shirt. I mean, it was just really, really nice clothing. And so, uh, it's, it's pretty impressive and I guess I, it would be fair to give a, a kudos to the staff that was involved in setting that up. I went to the ribbon cutting and thank you to the ambassadors, the Cedar Valley, the Girls Cedar Valley ambassadors who were there. It was, it was really an amazing event, so. It was, it was really an amazing event, so, um, and our kids actually used the clothing closet. I guess they were open until like six o'clock the night before the expo and kids were going in and trying on clothes, there's dressing rooms and they were trying on clothes and, um, and wearing those clothes for the interviews at the expo. And it was just a, it was an amazing event. So, um, it really fits in and I think it exemplifies what we're working for and, and the vision, um, really coming to fruition. So just a great event. Um, just a second comment about the robotics tonight, I just, I feel like we are a district of many options, you know, if you look at our slogan, we talk about, you know, global choices, limitless options. I really feel like that is what we do and so robotics was just another opportunity. I was really, I, I was surprised, cause I think sometimes, uh, the kids are in robotics, like that is their thing, but the students tonight really talked about how they were in multiple things. So, um, whether this is their one, one and only, or whether this is part of their recipe of involvement, it doesn't matter to me, I'm just so glad that we offer that. So it's just a, it's just a great, great, um, piece of, you know, piece of the, the puzzle. And then the last thing, I want to just, um, thank the, the school board members, it is Board Recognition, um, Week or Month or probably should be Year, but we're just so grateful for you. It was really nice to have Tara recognize you and call out your years of service. But I just wrote down a few words, when she was talking, I just thought of some words that came to mind, I just, you know, first one was commitment. I, I think every single person on this board is so committed to Waterloo schools and to the, the, um, the mission, whatever it was that caused you to run to be a school board member in the first place, um, you get to do that, but you also have to do all of the other things that come with being a school board member and it, it is not easy. So, uh, diligence, perseverance, focus, to stay focused, this laser-like focus, focus on our, on our work, um, is amazing. I, I also wrote down, you know, discernment, um, it is not easy to discern what's, what's right and, um, because there are varying perspectives, there are varying opinions and, you know, maybe somebody calls you and, and shares with a story and then you have to discern, like, okay, is there, you know, and usually there's some truth to that and sometimes there's truth to, uh, you know, another part of it. And so, um, the time that it takes to really, to do a good job in your role. And then the last one I just wrote down was the word champion. I just, I feel like that's what you do, you champion our district and you come here, you know, you come to meetings twice a month, but you come to so many more events, whether it's other meetings or whether it's just supporting our district. So I just want to give a wholehearted thank you to each one of you. I'm excited to do the, I always liked the luncheon, so I, I'm sad that we're waiting till September to do that, but yet I also get it. So we'll, we'll look forward to, um, celebrating you later, but please know how much, uh, we appreciate what you're doing, we're grateful.
Thank you, it never hurts to be plied with cookies, just gonna put that out there. All right, I'm gonna start over here to my left with India for board comments.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Um, I just also want to give a big shout out to Dick Herbin, just his commitment as a volunteer to do that every year and, uh, his energy never seems to go down, like he, he just keeps going and going and I love it. And so, and he has the passion and the drive to do it, so, um, kudos to him and that team to be able to have someone who's so dedicated to be able to do that, so. Um, I also just wanted to see if, um, definitely you had any comments about the House Bill that passed.
The, are you talking about the diversity bill?
Yes.
Yep, yep, so that, the diversity bill, um, I actually did an interview with the, uh, Des Moines Register, just, uh, right before the board meeting started. So the, the diversity bill went through the House, went through the Senate, and it was signed today by the governor. So it sat on her desk for probably the better part of two weeks, I believe. Um, it's, it's been a while since it's passed, so, you know, I, I, I'll, I'll share with you exactly what I shared with the, the Des Moines Register. What I told them was, you know, we, we believe that the diversity bill came to be because of very, you know, it was very appropriate, we sought it, it made sense for our district, um, as it did for the other districts that approved it. And it really has, it's akin to a desegregation, um, bill, and so we, we supported it then, we still support it now. That being said, um, now that it's law, that it, we will not have a diversity bill, you know, we, we will absolutely comply with that. I do think that Waterloo Schools has worked very hard to be very unique and to bring in some really amazing opportunities that you can only get right here in Waterloo. And so, um, you know, we'll continue to do that, we want to continue to offer, you know, really amazing services for all of our kids. And, um, and, and, you know, we're gonna continue to seek opportunities to, to be different and to, um, kind of bring the heat. So, uh, that's, that's what I shared with them and so, um, that's, would be my only comments.
Appreciate you commenting, um, I don't know how much is gonna change for a lot of people in the fall when that bill goes through and things of that nature, but I think we had a really good example of, with, uh, the robotics team and some good work that's happening. And so I'm hoping people will realize, you know, when you make a decision of what opportunities are available, um, some of the things you just don't get access. I mean, I think Shanley made a point about your daughter being in soccer and just being able to be involved with other, your daughter being involved with other students and other districts and a lot of people don't even get that opportunity so later in life. So, you, we're doing good things and just remember that, you know, we're coming in the fall, so, thanks.
Great reminder. Jessie?
Echo just a little bit on the, on the robotics a little bit, cause, you know, I appreciate everything they did coming in the show, but the big thing is, you know, we have, you know, a few great volunteers helping, but we could use a lot more out in the community. You know, we have a lot of technical people in this community and you want an opportunity to really be able to contribute to growth to students who may not have that, uh, technical mentorship elsewhere, you know, please come in and help, help grow these teams and really see what some of these kids can do. So, that's my pitch for the community tonight.
Well, I have comments all over the board, but I too also wanted to, um, um, thank Mr. Durban because eleven hundred hours of volunteer hours, I mean, that literally is, twenty-two hundred hours is a full-time job. So that's all volunteer that he's giving to these kids. And, and it just struck me tonight when the young man said, you know, it really helped me through a hard time in my life. And he was up here talking to us and it just brings to me, to the choice, to the, to, every kid can be important. And so I just, I was very proud of that young man and all the kids, but I'm just, you know, it's hard, we don't know the struggles that kids have at home, you know, we sit here in our lives and, and, uh, the struggles that kids go through every day just to get to school. And I think that it's just, um, a, um, miracle and amazing, the choices that we give to these kids and they have the opportunity to be important. So I really appreciate that. And on that, the East High Variety Show is this week, I am so excited to go to that, um, Thursday and Friday night at seven o'clock, I think, so that will be a fun, um, um, outing. And then just a little concern, obviously the bill, but we all knew that was coming, bless you. But, um, just what you had, um, given to us, Jane, about the achievement figures, you know, we've got the kids testing mostly all done. And then, you know, they said potentially August, you know, and then the growth in, um, normative September. And it's like, wow, we can't do better than that for our kids. I mean, how can we help them get better if we don't have a basis to know where they're at? And I, it just frustrates me. So I guess that's just, um, if we could do anything to, um, advocate for or, um, to change that, I just wish we could because I think it would make us all better, a, a better education system if we could fight the battle, knowing where we're starting at the battle.
Yeah, and she's talking about the Iowa, uh, the statewide assessment of, of student progress, the ISAS, and so, yep, the, the testing is done, but this year with the virtual, I, I want to believe, Sue, I, I think your question is a good one, I want to believe though, that that has to do with COVID and the fact that we have, um, students who are, um, learning virtually this year, will not be testing until the very end. And so there was this delay in that, so I want to believe, the year before it was November before we got them back, so this year it'll be August and September, so let's hope next year it's, it's, um, you know, May-June.
And even advocating for a virtual, you know, the virtual that took them later, let's get our tests, the kids in seats before and then the, you know, I just think that there could be a better. Yeah, 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 and that, that way we could know what we're dealing with versus having to wait with everybody at the same time, because obviously they were different environments that they took the tests to, so. Anyway, that's just my soapbox tonight, so, thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Stacy, you're in the middle here, so I'm gonna go ahead and mic you up.
Okay, um, I, I just wanted to, um, to thank all the KUZN teachers for sticking with it, as, there's just a few weeks left, I mean, I know everyone's driving and there's so many cool activities happening, um, there's just a lot that everyone's involved in, so, whatever we can do to support our staff and our kids as they get to the end of the year, that's great, thanks.
Super, the home stretch, right? Okay, Aster?
I also wanna, uh, thank Mr. Herbin, um, as everybody probably will. And when Sue was talking, I, I wrote something down already and what I wrote was empowering students and instilling confidence. We listened to the young people, um, and some of their stories and, and, um, I know from personal experience, I have a young man that, um, has taken a liking to Mr. Herbin and is involved, um, in robotics, uh, and it's, it's pushed him to be more vocal, he, he's, I'm pretty shy, but he's a little bit more shyer than I am. And he mentioned, um, that he, uh, just got elected to the, uh, Youth City Council. So Mr. Herbin and along with, uh, a gentleman by the name of Mickey Johnson, who runs Upper Bound Program, um, those two gentlemen I know, um, instill confidence in young people, they empower students to be the best, their best selves, um, so I just wanted to give a shout out to those two gentlemen, uh, keep doing what you're doing. Our community is better because of people like you. And also I wanted to publicly, I don't think I commented, um, on Ms. Tara Thomas, uh, I wrote some things down for her as well. She always seemed to make our district look good. And we truly appreciate everything that you've done for our district. I know I'll probably get to see you soon as your, your children are in sports, athletics, um, so don't be a stranger, we, we truly appreciate everything you've done, um, in making our district look good at every, at every step. I don't think there was a, an event, no matter where it was, east side, west side, north, south, you were always there to capture the moment, um, so I'm grateful and, and we definitely appreciate you, so, job well done.
I think we owe her a phone though, you know? She always had her phone and, you know, I think we owe her a.
Thanks, Aster. Lyle?
Yeah, I wanna piggyback on what everybody else has said and underscore the importance of robotics, extracurricular activities, activities. I think it's important for us to grow that seed, you know? It can become a signature program, I mean, it maybe already is, but it should, it can be expanded. I don't know how scalable it is, you're kind of depending on, you know, maybe one or two people, but, but we ought to try to expand it, I think, from, you know, forty kids to four hundred kids, because like Aster said, uh, success in anything is, is contagious and it's an opportunity for some of these kids that, that aren't very confident in a non-threatening environment to, to succeed and, and, and that just helps them out forever. So I think it's a wonderful program. Jane, when you were speaking about the job career, were there any opportunities there, were they talking postgraduate or was there any apprenticeships or summer jobs, pregraduate that were kinda available?
Yeah, there's a little bit of everything, really, we, the, the internships and job shadows and the things that we consider work-based learning, um, pre-apprenticeships, um, registered apprenticeships, those are typically run through Joy Briscoe and so that's, that's a little different because it comes out of the different pathways that we offer. These were truly just jobs outside of school, so there definitely was a flavor for summer. Um, I heard people, you know, they were definitely recruiting for summer workers, but they were also working for, recruiting for after school. There were some who were, you know, they, they were hooking up with, um, you know, if you were going through the advanced manufacturing, then the advanced manufacturing instructor was saying, make sure you stop by booth number twelve and seventeen and, you know, thirty-seven because they're, those are the manufacturers and those, make sure you introduce yourself, even if you're not looking for a job, it's really good experience to go in and shake their hand and, and introduce yourself and go on. So, uh, it was really part of the recipe, so I, I would say yes to all of your questions.
So I don't know where we're at on the Achievement Recovery Program, I'm not sure if we've had an explanation of that, I'm, I'm, I guess would welcome one at this point, but part of it could be the, uh, uh, again, I'm thinking out loud here and expanding on the IJAG conversation, but can we make twenty-twenty-one a summer of jobs where we put ten people right now on beating the bushes and contacting, you know, all the contractors, starting with Larson, you know, can they use twenty kids, uh, this summer? And then, uh, you know, all the sidewalk repair people and the tree trimmers and, and the, uh, restaurants and the retailers and, and, you know, everybody's crying for help. This, to me, would be the very best recovery of academic achievement, if every kid had a job this summer. So we've got seven-hundred-and-thirty-nine juniors, we start with them, everybody gets a job. So can ten people go out and, and, uh, you know, line up, have many jobs. And by age, you know, this is what fifteen-year-olds can do and this is what sixteen-year-olds can do and this is what seventeen-year-olds can do. So, you know, again, it's, it's just kind of a massive new initiative, that's, that's probably gonna go nowhere, but it just seems like if ever there was an opportunity, the jobs are probably there. I mean, people are just, and, and our whole society is suffering, I don't know if you saw the news this morning, you know, but gas prices are up, what, twenty cents a gallon now? Not really because of the hacking, but because of truck drivers. Twenty percent of the tanker trucks are, are idle, cause they can't get drivers. So every work shortage affects somebody else and it, it builds on itself and all of a sudden you're in a crisis, so, you know, and speaking about some of these kids that, that, you know, need, not need motivation, but aren't, aren't, lack confidence at this point, you know, we're gonna need all hands on deck, we, we can't afford to lose anybody in any sort of non-productive or even destructive mode of operation. And so it just seems like if we're gonna go all in and bet all our chips on something, maybe a summer of jobs in twenty-twenty-one and, and expand it even more in twenty-twenty-two, get all the, there's eight-hundred-and-forty-seven sophomores, get them, get them jobs too. So I don't know if that's within the realm of possibility or not, but it just seems like somebody should coordinate that whole thing and then also iron out any conflicts there might be with the IJAG and the Career Center in terms of overlap and contacting these, you don't want different people from the same organization, maybe Waterloo Schools contacting Larson Construction and saying, hey, you're on a job. Anyway, those, that's my rambling, rambling, ending thoughts for tonight, but it just seems like the opportunity is, is right there. I don't know what's stopping us.
Low-hanging fruit.
Job for every kid, chicken in every pot.
Wow, FDR, yeah. Okay, so here, here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be the last one to say, again, I'm just so impressed with our first robotics teams and I just echo everyone's comments and I've had, I've been able to watch the kickoff at UNI a couple of years ago and I've been a judge and I'm just, I'm, I'm team first robotics, so there you go. I just wanted to say quickly that last week was Teacher Appreciation Week and I know we talked about it at our last meeting, we had the books that we gave, but I, I just wanna make sure that we give a shout out to all of our amazing teachers. I saw some really cool posts on Twitter and on Facebook that people put out to honor and thank the amazing teachers that we have in our district, so I just wanted to, to point that out. And it's never too late to thank a teacher, if you forgot last week, you can always send a note or an email, I know that that encouragement is always appreciated. And to Stacy's point, you know, we're heading to the end of the year and any little bit you can fill up their tank with, I think, would be most appreciated, so. And then lastly, while we talk about awesome stuff, um, graduation is right around the corner and so our next meeting is May twenty-fourth and we will be doing that meeting early and virtual so that three of our board members can get to the expo graduation and then the next night, um, West High graduates and the following night, East High graduates. And just tonight, in fact, our awesome PR department put out the links that will be available to watch, all three of those ceremonies will be, um, done virtually so that you can, you know, live, livestreamed, excuse me, um, and those links will stay active even after the night of the event so that you can go back and watch them again. So, or for, you know, for our families who, we only get four tickets and, um, if you have more people that wanna watch it, you certainly will be able to. So I just wanna let our.
So I just want to let our public know that. And there being no further business to come before the board, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, Stacy, thanks, and Sue, seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Good night and be well.